Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Krieger County Special Public Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it's two thirty P M. We're having this meeting to revert to review the core services of the Krieger County Health Department and the Krieger County Library. We'll start with public comment, but I would like to ask the referring from the public caller, you pertaining publicly comment to the items of discussion today, which is the Health Department and the Krieger County Library. Tomorrow, we have a board meeting, and if you have other comments or things you want to tell us about, and that'd be the great time to join. Katie? And Will?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We are here this afternoon for the special meeting to discuss both the library and the Health Department as it relates to a description of core services for each of those departments. So as as you're aware, this is this is a an effort to, this is part of an effort to have conversations about core services for each department at the at the county to ensure alignment and kind of common understanding about what each department here at Krieger County does in terms of providing critical services to our community. So we're going to start today with the Health Department. Brianna, if you don't mind pulling up the PowerPoint presentation. And you can skip to the I think it's the second slide. So again, this is just part of part of the broader conversation we're going to be having in regard to all of the departments. If today we're focused on the on the Health Department and in the library. I should go back one slide. Thank you. So you you previously saw this slide when we did the Sheriff's Office. We started the conversation in reverse in the Sheriff's Office. Core service description. This is something this is a slide I'll I'll continue to include because I want to make sure whoever's attending the meeting has a has an understanding of what I'm kind of defining as core services as a given board with this conversation across the organization. So core services in the public sector refer to the fundamental and essential functions that a government department or agency provides to fulfill its mission and serve the community. Community. These services are vital for ensuring public welfare, security, and the effective administration of governmental responsibilities. Core services typically include the primary functions critical to mission fulfillment, legally mandated or required services, essential public goods and services, and take into account operational sustainability. The key characteristics of core services include that they are centrally aligned with the mission and community needs, that they are subject to public expectation and demand, prioritized in strategic and financial planning. In other words, you prioritize your core services when doing strategic and financial planning. And core services also form the foundation that public trust is built on and ensure accountability for the local government. So with that kind of description of core services in mind, what I would like to do now is going to turn the mic over to Katie to watch through the core services description that she has put together for the Health Department. We'll also follow that up with the conversation regarding what the state requires the county to provide. And then, Brianna, I might, once we get to that point, I might have you pull up the memo that's in the packet so we can highlight the table that Katie put together in the in the core services description. With that. Thanks, Katie.
Thanks, Will. I didn't want to have my back to everyone. I'm not it's awkward. So hello to all of you. Um, I do want to acknowledge our folks in the room, though, and introduce myself. My name is Katie Prime. I'm the Health and Human Services Director for Krieger County. And we have, Brianna, if you want to go to the next slide, I think that summarizes. Well, it it provides our mission, which is to provide fair opportunity for community members to achieve their full health potential, and that means regardless of your walk in life, your circumstances, everyone should have access to what is necessary to be as healthy as possible. The work of public health safeguards our community largely through preventative measures. That's what that's public health apart from our typical healthcare system is that prevention aspect. We do have components of intervention and ensuring access to care, and we do all of our work in partnership with community organizations and the community members themselves. The Health Protection Response is the first core service group I'd like to talk about. It encompasses several. This is our, this is our biggest group of services. It includes emergency preparedness and response, which the county has emergency preparedness that lives within our Sheriff's Office. The emergency preparedness services that live within public health are very health specific. So ensuring that there's awareness and education around air quality in an emergency, that folks know how to access things like prescription and vital health-related needs that come up in an emergency situation. That preparedness and response piece lives in health protection and response as well as communicable disease. All medical providers have a list of communicable diseases that are required to report to governmental public health because those are ones that require follow-up by our nurses and our staff to ensure that they're that we're minimizing the spread and the health effects of these communicable diseases. The other set of services that fall into health protection and response are our environmental health work, body of work. So inspections of restaurants, food, distribution that happens in, say, daycares. And then water safety around pools, spas, and then public water systems as well. And the whole purpose of the Protection and Response Core Services is to minimize the harm of either emergencies or emergent issues like disease in those effects in our community. And then the preparation piece means that we're able to bounce back quickly after any emergency. I mentioned earlier that the thing that separates public health or distinguishes, definitely doesn't separate, distinguishes public health from our healthcare system is that prevention aspect. And so trying to get upstream of health issues, understanding what is causing health issues in any given community. And so the the focus areas right now in local public health in Krieger County are we monitor what is coming up in our health system. So in our emergency rooms, what is showing up in our primary care spaces? A lot of that is related to substance use. So chronic conditions like cancer, diabetes are related to either addiction or nutrition. What people have access to in their homes as well as the access to services that are available in the community. And so based on that surveillance, we work upstream with partners like our schools and community organizations to prevent these chronic conditions before they even start. That's the ideal scenario. So making sure that our kids are engaged with trusted adults, that they have things to do after school, that they're aware of risks is a a large part of the work that we do here, as well as if someone is experiencing addiction, how do they get connected with help to address that addiction? That's what they choose. So the whole goal here is to prevent folks from showing up in our emergency rooms and our behavioral health systems in that kind of crisis and treatment space is if we're catching things early and redirecting and providing resources necessary to avoid that altogether. Our third group of core services is around clinical access. We do have a clinic in our public health department that largely focuses on vaccine availability and family planning and reproductive health services. There's a lot of screening for communicable diseases. Sexually transmitted illnesses are screened for and treated early to prevent. Again, any of our communicable disease work is to prevent it from spreading and causing undue engagement in our emergency services or urgent care services. We also support folks who are seeking insurance access and then helping them navigate that system to be able to access care that does exist in our community. So our our goal with our clinical services are to prevent disease, to catch diseases early and treat them, and then reduce the cost in our overall healthcare system. And then we have our family health services that are really keyed into our perinatal or pre-pregnancy individuals, our our new parents, our youngest children, to make sure that they're meeting the developmental milestones that we would expect with growth and cognitive and cognitive development and attachments with parents and other family members, other children. And so we have perinatal care coordination where a staff member is working with families who are even just thinking about becoming pregnant or if they're in the early stages of pregnancy, making sure that they have access to the care that they need to have a healthy pregnancy. And then brew when the child is born, supporting parents and young children with things like making sure that they have the nutrition that they need, and they're connected with the care, whether it's social services or primary care that is necessary to get them started on the right path. A lot of our mental health work that we do is in that prevention space in public health, but we also contract services through best care treatment services that provide direct mental health, behavioral health treatment. So that involves our crisis response. I already mentioned prevention and that education piece. And then we also respond to every fatal suicide and overdose that occurs in the county, follow up with the families because those are those are instances that have a risk of contagion and so engaging with families and those who knew the person who died is ideal in preventing additional either attempts or fatalities. All right, we do have several statutory requirements for public health. I think to start with is that the Board of Commissioners, you all are our Board of Health, both for public health and behavioral health. We do provide annual plans to Oregon Health Authority about the local work, the local needs that we're addressing and the local work that we're implementing. Communicable disease is a state mandate for both public health and for medical providers to report certain communicable diseases. Immunization, that assurance of access to immunizations is part of the mandated work of public health as well as family planning services. Those are mandated as funds are available. And then the environmental health piece of inspections and follow-up complaints, or there's some overlap with communicable disease reports of foodborne illnesses. There's a little bit of overlap in our response to prevent additional harm or illness. And I'm not sure what the next. So this is our behavioral health mandated services. So there are a set of basic services. They're called basic services here. Those are our core services and communication with you all, just so that that language means the same thing, but there are legislatively mandated services that our community mental health provider offers. A an annual plan has to be submitted to Oregon Health Authority for behavioral health. We have to provide that crisis response, the emergent, the emergent care prevention and community engagement work around planning what is going to be the most effective prevention strategies in our specific community. Asking for community involvement required in our work there. And then there's also an aspect of mandatory reporting.
Just to kind of follow up on on the mandated services conversation, I thought maybe it'd be helpful if we brought up the table that's in the the core services description.
It's not the table that's in our packet. That's what I'm looking at right now. Because I have questions without that. Page twelve or before. Oh, maybe not. This one's just.
This one?
Yeah.
So yeah, included in in that core services description is a is kind of summary table that highlights a number of the services that Katie Katie discussed. She mentioned the various kind of service areas within the Health Department. It includes a description. So the far left column is the the core service itself. So I think there's five core services, for example, clinical access. Then the the table identifies the programs within that core service, funding for that each program, legislative status, so is it mandated, is it discretionary? Also, I think it's helpful, Katie's identified when it may be mandated but subject to availability of funds. This is a quick reference to the applicable statute or rule that requires us to make a certain service available, and then some additional notes. I think this is is helpful in sort of in terms of laying out where some of the the requirements for the Health Department come from, as well as identifying where where we may have identified either recently or in the past, certain services that may be helpful to the county but may not be be required under statute. So Mr. Hermick, you mentioned you had some questions. Happy to try and answer those questions now.
So let's just go, I'm going to just be real simple. So first question I want to ask. So you said how you are in my agents with emergency rooms and providers, Katie? Are they contacting you? How is that? I mean, do I have to walk into the Health Department or is my provider going to contact you because I'm using the special service or something? How do you keep that network going?
Several ways. In the space of communicable disease reporting, we, there's three, at least three different pathways that are used. We all use, at least locally, our hospital system, our H Q H C, our Mosaic Medical, and us use the same electronic health record system. And so reports of communicable diseases can be sent securely through electronic health records. They can also call or fax in reports of communicable diseases that are reportable. As far as referrals for other services, we have monthly clinic meetings with each of the providers and while it's a group meeting of clinical providers in Krieger County to share what services are being offered at any given time to follow up on referral pathways, if they're working or not, where we can improve. If there's shortages in a certain space, we problem solve around those and then share with each other when we have new providers or new services available so that we can be sharing with our given populations.
And then, like, I'm just going to take, I think on the first part here, they talked about the it's discretionary to have a school, a school-based health center, but we're contracted with Mosaic. Are you kind of aware of their things or it's core service we're providing, it's contracted? Are they, again, reporting in these monthly things? If you know, I mean, you're, is there one staff member, I guess, dedicated that's going in and talking to best care and seeing what they're doing and going here and seeing what's going on in the schools? And and is there anything that we need to be thinking about outreach on, I guess?
Yeah, for a school-based health center, we do have monthly coordination meetings that I attend as well as if it makes sense for additional public health staff or like if school, school nurses are involved in those meetings as well. So there is an aspect of contract oversight and each, so if we're talking about school-based health center, our community mental health contracts, there is contract oversight and regular touch points where we're checking in on services that are being provided, supporting if there's either staffing issues or trouble meeting a certain metric. And those typically occur monthly or more often, if needed.
You guys, I was gonna, I don't want to hog everything up. Do you have any questions?
You're doing good.
Thanks, thanks. And then down later. So and then another thing that that worried me is like your WIC and your nurse home visiting, that is discretionary. And that concerns me because, so is that something that we use our five seventy-seven general fund money to do because WIC is important, our nursing, our nursing home business is important to make sure that that's being taken care of? How are we balancing that if we have no funding?
If we have no funding for those programs, they wouldn't exist. So right now, they're discretionary, but we do have federal funds in this instance to offer both WIC and nurse home visiting. We also bill for nurse home visiting services, and so we have income revenue through billing for nursing services that helps support those programs. Right now, there is not general fund supporting either one of those programs, county general fund. They're either state general fund, federal funds, billing revenue, and we also seek sometimes like foundation grants or other organizational grants to support the work that's being done there.
So if I had someone in nursing home and I had a complaint, would you be a person that I would want to go to first so you could investigate? How would I, how would I navigate those waters, I guess?
The nursing homes are a little bit different than, so our nurse home visiting is very specific.
To a house and you're having a problem and it's a follow-up more.
For young children, for infants and young children. The interaction that we have with our long-term care facilities is usually around communicable disease, and we do have nurses who will respond to maybe a norovirus outbreak. We do preventative trainings and infection control. So that is the space where public health interacts with long-term care. Oversight of long-term care facilities, like if there's a complaint about the level of care that's being provided, that is typically those grievances would be filed with the state agency that provides oversight of the licensure of long-term care facilities. They can be directed to us and we would help navigate that process.
You would go on to the state is where you would go.
Correct.
And then when you're looking, so you had your priority areas here, like you had protect people. So you have in twenty twenty-three, seventy-two point seven percent of two-year-olds were vaccinated and and you want to have seventy-five percent. What kind of number is that? Is that through a state number? Is that a county number? Where where do you get that, I guess, those figures?
That's specific. Those percentages in our metrics section are specific to Krieger County. And you can Google search the Oregon early childhood immunization rates. It's on the Oregon Health Authority website, and there's a running table of immunization rates by county for the state of Oregon. So you can look at the state rates, you can look at Benton County, you can look at Lincoln.
Is there a a target that you, I mean, obviously you have seventy-five percent, but do does the state rely on your kind of a target? Do you get your hands slapped or they, how are we doing with our target, I guess?
They don't, but they do have incentives. So through the coordinated care organizations, they do set quality incentive measures where as a community, so in in our case, we're part of the Central Oregon Coordinated Care Organization or Pacific Source. And as a central Oregon region, it's, there are benchmarks set for immunization rates for two-year-olds that would then result in money being reinvested back into communities, money being reinvested back into providers for meeting certain metrics.
Some of that based on the Central Oregon Health, Community Health and.
Central Oregon Health Council is involved. Yeah, they're the organization that facilitates the reinvestment of funds. Pacific Source is the one that monitors the health metrics.
Which in in this last, a couple of meetings ago, that was one of the things they were concerned because they hadn't met their quinn, basically, for that. That's why we kind of brought that up. And then when you get in here to emergency department and urgent care heat-related illnesses, we had twelve people in twenty twenty-three that had a heat stroke. What do I, what am I looking at, I guess, on that, that thing there?
Yeah, those are numbers of individuals who are presenting in the emergency room and or urgent cares with yes, it is typically heat.
And so what would we do as a follow-up with them? Because is there anything that we can do with them?
Part of what we do is look at, what are the demographics? Are they folks who are, are the kids? Are they folks who are working? Do we need to partner with certain businesses to provide resources? Do we need to partner with schools to provide additional resources? Is it more of a public communication around making sure that we can recognize early signs? We also take into consideration, are they, what's the income levels? Do they not have the ability to have air conditioning in their homes? Are their homes not insulated well enough? Do we need to be providing heating or cooling spaces so that if folks needs to get out of their homes to cool off or warm up, what is the need?
And then that's where we use our partners like Thrive or whatever and go in there. Okay. And on the child abuse thing, I know we use saving grace, and again, is that something that it's reported and do we do? it's reported and do we do that or is that basically a provider or ER or how, how does that kind of play out?
Uh, our staff are mandatory reporters, so if we.
If you saw it, you would report, okay, and then it would go on from there. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Katie, very much.
Thank you for your questions.
I guess, I mean, some of them might have been very simplistic, but as I read this, I have, so anyway, sorry.
There's a lot of jargon.
Well, and there is, and there's a lot of different stuff, and then there's important stuff that's discretionary, but like WIC, we need to provide it, you know? And prenatal care, we need to, you know, and as I look at that and what's mandated and whatever, it, yeah, it's, it's a lot there, so. And I think it's very good you put the chart up. Well, I'll give you kudos for that.
All right. Thank you, Katie, for putting it together.
Okay, thank you for putting it together. Yeah, perfect. Okay.
So, yeah.
I'm the only bully here. You two gotta ask something, so you don't make me look so bad. I do like you, Katie, I wasn't trying to be mean.
Oh, I know.
I just wanted to get this clear, so anyway.
And, and feel free to follow up with, with Katie or myself, any, any follow-up questions. If you can hop back to our point.
What the state wants us to do.
So, you know, there's a, there's a narrative, there's a list of mandated services, um, Katie's put together that helpful table. Um, I, I just wanted to take, I, I don't wanna get, really, as we, as we kind of create a, a foundation of kind of a common understanding about the core services of the, of the health department. I don't wanna get too, too lost in the weeds, but I do think there's a couple of points that, that should be made regarding funding of the health department, so. Um, you know, there's, there's some services listed in that table and that Katie's described that are discretionary. But I would say most, if not all of those programs are, are grant-funded to a certain extent. Is that a safe assumption, Katie?
Yes, grant or, um, insurance billing supported.
So even though something may be discretionary, if the county were having a conversation at some point in the future about, you know, we need to look at our, our discretionary services and maybe find out which ones are not being utilized. It doesn't necessarily mean that I told you that, that the county all of a sudden is gonna have additional funds to expend on, on another priority service. So it's not apples for apples when they're looking at pulling, pulling funds from the department. In fact, this year's budget includes, um, two point one seven eight of intergovernmental transfers, um, including grants. So that's a big chunk of the health department's budget. And then there, there is also, uh, a go, a general fund transfer of five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. So the county does support from the general fund, the health department to that extent, but by and large, the funding is coming from, as Katie noted, insurance grants. Um, we also have some, you know, it's not just governmental grants, there's also foundations that's providing support, so.
So I'm gonna ask you, who set up that, that percentage out of the general fund? Was that set up by commissioners at one time or is that state mandated?
I do not believe it's state mandated. There is a, there's a statute that requires the county to adequately fund the health department. Our budget refers to a fifteen percent.
Okay, that's what I was.
But, but I do not believe that is, that is mandated. I think this is state and county policy.
Yeah, we do have, or the state has a system set up where, um, for the public health modernization at the state level, the county, the local general fund investment into public health, um, there's incentives, so we would, based on how much the county supports local governmental public health, there's additional money that can come from the state to acknowledge and support that contribution.
So, I mean, going to the last slide here regarding the health department, um, you know, the, the, the goal here today is just to start the conversation, try to build that common understanding about the core services for the health department. Um, one of the things you will hear from me as we go through this with each of the departments is what questions do you, the board, have, um, that staff can, can go back and try to get the answers to and come back to you with? Um, answers hopefully on, um. So obviously, you know, if you have questions now, if you wanna process the information, um, and, and see if you have any additional questions, just let us know, but you know, we're happy to, to take a deeper dive into some of the specific programs, um, that the health department provides. Um, if there are certain kind of performance metrics you'd be interested in seeing, we can, we can try to put some of that together. Um, but I just wanna make sure, um, you know, based on this kind of initial presentation, um, right now, there aren't any outstanding questions, um, and certainly if there are not, that's fine. But wanna make sure you guys feel welcome to, to approach us with any future questions you have as we continue to work through this.
I wanna commend the health department on the, the outreach that you do, like you have the Veterans Fair. You have Riley that comes to the emergent, I mean, there is outreach things that you do out to the public. Not necessarily always appreciated or attended well, but that you are there and you're, you make your presence known. And I wanna commend them because you do that very, very well. And I know Brian and I went to the Veterans Fair and we were very impressed, so I wanna say kudos to them. And then there's been some other, and then just here recently, when they did the, uh, Will and I went to the Veterans of the Coffee thing, and then I think Seth went to a walk that was going on. I mean, you have embraced the different, what do I wanna say, days or causes? I'm not sure exactly what, but, and, and did outreach and that has been very, very good. And I think that's a great way for us to get our message out. So thank you. And thank your department and your staff.
Yes, everything that you do, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Whenever I go to a community event, I usually see you or some of the other folks from the, the fair, if it's um, farmers markets, just really
Hmm.
consistent.
Yep, help is everywhere we look.
We take it for granted some days. Thank you.
And yes, I do welcome, um, questions about services or metrics that you'd like to see for the services that we're providing. Um, we measure things up and down, left and right, so I'm happy to provide that information.
Here's to smellst, here's to fist, I guess.
Thank you.
All right. You, you get, you get to leave this school, Will.
Thank you, Katie, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming and, and answering my, probably some of my stupid questions, but thank you. Now you're pick on a library.
Yay.
Oh, wow.
You're not hot, so.
We should have told her it was.
Yeah.
So now we're gonna move on to the Kirk County Library. Um, you know, again, the goal here is to review the, the core services description for the library and start to build that common, common understanding of the, the critical services that the library provides our community. Um, as you're all aware, we're, we're actively recruiting for a library director, so I greatly appreciate him volunteering to be here, uh, today. Um, I'm not a library expert, um, but I'm gonna do my best to kind of walk through the core services description. Um, and, uh, and, and certainly ask Kim to jump in if I'm, I'm going off out in the left field, so.
You're sinking.
If I'm sinking. So, yeah, we'll start with the, the mission and the core purpose. Um, the mission of the library is to be welcoming, resourceful, anchor for community learning, enjoyment and inspiration. The vision for the library is to be a trusted community hub, beloved by all residents and visitors. And the purpose is to deliver free, equitable access to information, opportunity, incentive, engagement. So, um, this next slide, kind of just a quick overview of the core services, essential functions include physical and digital, uh, collections access, technology and connectivity support, uh, programs for lifelong learning and literacy, outreach and engagement. Uh, the impact from these services, uh, supports literacy, workforce readiness, safety and resident well-being. So we, we've identified four, um, kind of core service areas. The first is collections. Um, you know, the service area, period provides and helps residents use high-quality physical and digital, um, materials that reflect Kirk County's needs and interests. Key activities include maintaining or maintain circulating collections of books, large print audiobooks, magazines, DVDs and newspapers. Provide a robust e-library, uh, with million-plus items available, available from home or anywhere with Wi-Fi. Offer local history and genealogy resources. Create community information on emergencies, mental health, housing need programs, transportation and more. Um, and deliver readers advisory and research assistance, provide interlibrary loan to extend access beyond just the local holding. The impact from, um, the service area, um, is that it ensures free access to trusted information and entertainment, supports literacy and school success, reduces barriers for rural and homebound residents. Without this service, residents would face fear of learning opportunity, opportunity, limited information resources and higher personal costs. And, uh, just a quick note, um, this collections service area, um, aligns with, uh, the board commissioner's goals and priorities that relate to, um, continuing outstanding service, enhanced quality of life, mobility and safety. Anything you wanna add to the collections service area?
We circulated one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine physical items this last year.
Wow.
Um, and with our digital circs, forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine. And that was without having hoopla for about five months. So that number would increase substantially had we had that for the five months.
What was the digital number?
Forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine. And then the interlibrary loan, where we go outside the tri-county area, we look all over the United States. That number is forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine.
That's impressive on that.
People love to read.
Yeah. That's very impressive, that number.
Yep.
Thanks, Kim. Um, the second service area is technology and connectivity. Um, you know, the, the quick description of this service area is that it bridge, bridges the digital divide by providing devices, connectivity and skills support. So residents can learn, work, access government services and participate in modern life. Um, key activities, uh, include offering public computers, some supporting remote access to the catalog. Um, and e-library, uh, provide one-on-one digital skills help. Um, and, um, as far as connectivity, I also had a note in here about the, um, the two thousand and four Bluebird Bookmobile, I did just wanna make a, a quick comment on that given, given current status, so. Um, in, in, in Kim, I might ask you to fill in some details, but in, in conversations with staff, I understand there's been relatively limited engagement with the bookmobile. Um, we also need to make sure that whoever's, um, driving the bookmobile is, is comfortable doing so, so just, just wanna make a quick comment. At this point, the bookmobile, um, is not making its normal rounds. We still have a van that is getting out to, uh, communities outside of Primeville. Um, but I think, um, with, you know, the, um, the hiring of a, 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 a researcher, or, I'm sorry, outreach, um, specialist, I think this is a great opportunity, time for us to explore what communities outside of Primeville want in terms of, um, library services, how we can kind of drive up engagement in those communities. And if the bookmobile ultimately isn't what, what is gonna drive up that engagement, um, I wanna make sure we're, we're taking advantage of the resources we have. So I do have a comment in there about, about the bookmobile, but I, I would note that most likely when, um, we kind of move forward finalizing, um, the core services description for the library, it'll make more of a reference to, to continuing to evolve with the needs of the rural community to ensure we continue to connect with them. Um, and not just folks in the rural community, also people that you need, um, aren't able to come to, to the actual library.
So, when I drive by, that bookmobile is very large.
Oh, yes, very large.
And, and it would be hard to just get in and drive it. So now that you've been using the van, is the van really needing it? I mean, people can drive a van, it's easier, you can back, I mean, I would hate to have to back, I would think Palina is a loop.
You can't back that thing up.
Back up that monster, it's like a monster. So is the van accessing the needs that we need and it's, it's?
Absolutely.
So I'm wondering if the bookmobile is just so large and so cumbersome that in a way, it's, it's almost a detriment to us not.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a cute idea, but.
Oh, it is.
But it is expensive to upkeep. Um, I think it was about twenty thousand dollars last year to get it back on the road. And as of right now, it won't start. Um, so it's there in the parking lot. Um, there is a lot of upkeep and it takes a lot just to drive that thing around.
And does anybody that, since you had the van, does anybody feel, I remember when the bookmobile used to come to Palina. I wouldn't even get in the bookmobile, I would just give a list of books that I wanted and give books back. So are people feeling they're get, I mean, they're, they're getting what they need?
Yep.
Like I said, because, am I wrong in the way that I did it?
No.
They're not going in and browsing a library. If I was gonna browse a library, I'd come into town.
Yeah, we didn't have hardly anybody that would come and visit us when we'd take the bookmobile out. It just.
Yeah.
It's a cute idea, it's like a novelty, but it's not well utilized.
Yeah. And then like hoopla, is that avail, I mean, if I'm in the rural area and I have Wi-Fi, I can hook right onto.
Absolutely, yep.
That's just.
To over a million items.
I hate to say like a propaganda, but us letting that kind of get out more, that people understand that because you take a ranch up in Palina, that would be great, that I could just access it and I don't have to.
Yep. You don't have to go anywhere, you don't have to leave your house.
No.
Yeah.
No. I could be at midnight and I can access it, that's what I choose to do.
And a lot bigger selection. Yeah.
Okay. I'm just thinking that's maybe our, our way and the van is just something that's just, it's just easy. I love that thing and I think, I've driven stock trailers with cattle in them, but I wouldn't wanna drive that bookmobile.
I've only driven it once and that was a long time ago, but it is, it's a beast.
Yeah, it, it just, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I interrupted our, our slideshow.
That's what we're here, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
Um, so just, just kind of wrapping up the technology and connectivity service area, um, the, the impact is from the service area is that it empowers residents to work, study, access government services and engage online. So moving on to service area number three, programs and learning. Um, this service area delivers lifelong learning opportunities and enrichment from early childhood through older adulthood, connecting residents to skills, culture and inspiration. Um, key activities include early literacy storytimes and caregiver support, hosting all ages programs and classes with health and health and wellness, community enrichment through musical and dramatic performances, uh, and discover and go cultural pass program, uh, which connects Kirk County residents with regional institutions. Uh, the impact is from the service areas that it helps build literacy, school readiness, creativity and workforce resilience, strengthen, strengthens community identity and well-being. Um, without these programs, learning opportunity, opportunities would shrink and isolation would increase. Again, alignment with board commissioner goals and priorities, um, placed outstanding service and the enhancement of quality of life, mobility here in the county. Service area number four. Wasn't part of that, putting on the job fair for the folks that lost their jobs from the?
Yeah, we partnered, um, with the job fair folks and I believe they, I wanna say, sent people, a hundred and eight people, um, for jobs for. I want to say, sent people, 108 people for jobs, for job interviews during that time.
It was, it was very, very well attended.
Yeah, it really was.
Very, very helpful, because like basics, as an example, they were new, they were doing interviews with several guys.
They needed rooms.
And you said, here, take this, here, take. You guys were very, very accommodating and helpful that day. Amazingly.
Yep.
And it was, and it was very impressive to walk around and see all the people that came, but also the people that presented.
The community support.
Very, very well.
Yes. Yeah, it was great.
Before I jump to number four, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Number three.
Yeah, so our program attendance went up. We were projecting roughly 8,500, and our program attendance for last year was 9,312 people.
Perfect.
And we hosted 1,623 programs for all ages last year, so we did really good.
The service area number four, engagement and outreach. Quick description, the library serves as a community magnet in Primeville and across the country through outreach partnerships and welcoming spaces, both physical and virtual. Key activities include providing inclusive, safe spaces for study, meetings, and civic participation, and hosting community events and exhibits. And our activity is that there's monthly outreach to Palina Post Brothers, Palma, Juniper Canyon. And we also maintain strategic partners to connect residents with services throughout the community. I did include a note here about planning countywide service expansion, including possibly a future Juniper Canyon branch. I wanted to have an opportunity, have a conversation about that. I think it is, I think it's a great idea. Just speaking as former community development director, I think there's a lot that needs to be discussed in terms of Juniper Canyon services that are needed. And I think this is a part of, a part of that conversation, so. My recommendation would be when we get to finalizing this core services description, is that we remove that as part of the core service description. I don't think it fits neatly as a course service. I think we should welcome the conversation and continue the conversation about the needs of Juniper Canyon and the potential of a library branch. But I think it's a lot to ask of library staff to dedicate the time and resources that a capital project like that would entail, especially when we're talking about not just the library branch, but potentially other resources. Obviously, a number of stakeholders are involved in that. So I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to have a conversation about it. But my recommendation would be that as far as the core services description goes, it would be, we remove that when we get to the point where we're ready to finalize these descriptions.
Yeah, I think really the first step would be the people in Juniper Canyon requesting and kind of giving us an idea of what they were looking for. Before we spend a lot of time and effort coming up with a product that they may not even like.
Right.
I think government does that a lot, where we try and jam things down people's throats instead of asking what they
What they really want.
And so I think there's a real opportunity here to
I think a community center up there, and then an offshoot, like a room, offshoot of a library is what is really, really needed. I know that I've been kind of looking out for Palina for our Palma Club, it's getting pretty bad. But my thought would be if we ever revise it to keep a room there, that would be, and you could even put a, oh, you know, a keypad. So if you had a trusted library member, they could, you know, they could access it and whatever. I know that that's been done over in, oh my God, Seneca, that gal that's from the four H O S U. She set up a thing, and then she put in a computer, and then she put in a printer, and she put in, and it's all done on a, remember she did a presentation for us? And she was, she got you, she was really good, because you, she was like a salesperson, you said, I want one of those, you know? That is what I kind of see, because then you could have a meeting there. Or if there was an emergency, or there was a public health thing, you could have, and it seems like a most, kind of an all-round place.
Yes.
But a library, obviously, be included. I'm not saying not, but I do agree, that's a lot for you. You guys have enough to handle already.
We do, we do, and that was a huge project.
And a lot of money.
And a lot of money.
But hopefully rural things are opening up and we can get some grants or get that. But I agree with Seth, what do the people want?
Yes, what government wants is what the citizens want.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate the, appreciate the feedback. I just moving on to the impact of the engagement and outreach service area. By doing, engaging or promoting engagement and outreach, it increases access for aligned areas, reduces service gaps, and strengthens social cohesion with our service, rural residents, based diminished access and learning culture and essential information. I think there's a little bit of overlap here with the connectivity service area we discussed previously. I think having a digital option for folks is really important in terms of making sure we're reaching out and providing service to folks outside the Primeville area. And similarly, with the conversation about the van and providing books, I think there's, again, there's just overlap with the engagement and outreach service area. So Kim's highlighted some of the, some of the amazing stats. I think the library has, continues to grow, and its impact is based on the numbers. People who are visiting the library, checking out books, whether physical books from the library or online. I don't know if you've touched on this yet, but my recollection is that the library had a goal for fiscal year '25 of having over 100,000 visitors. I think it was 102,000.
I think it was 102,000.
Visitors to the library last year.
Yeah. Lot of traffic that comes through there.
So I think the library is trending in a really positive direction in terms of getting people engaged. I think we're heading in a, in a, in a direction where we're continuing to find ways to provide those critical services to people, those services they want and need. And, you know, the service or the core services description includes a few performance metrics. I'm happy to discuss any of those if you have any questions. But the, you know, as Kim's highlighted, program attendance, visitors, circulation, all of that is trending upward. I think the next slide is mandatory. Oh, performance and partnerships, the written description that is in your packet has a list of key partnerships. Folks like Friends of the Creek County Library, Creek County Schools, Neighbor Impact, I'm not going to rebuild the whole list, but there's a number of important partnerships that the library has throughout the community. So I did want to highlight, like, what it's going to do with all the departments, the state mandated kind of level of service for the library. I think that first line explains most of it. There's not, we don't have to have a library in the county, but if we do have a library, there are certain kind of limited, there's not a long list of requirements that I could identify for the library, but if we do have a library, we must ensure free and equal access. Minimum, in certain minimum conditions, must receive some public funding, must maintain scheduled open hours, must serve all ages with material and programming. Then we must meet the Oregon State Library Board standards. Just a little more detail on this next slide, so materials and programming, as I know they must serve both all youth, adults, and seniors, oversight. And operations that we're seeing by the Oregon State Library Board, there is an exemption for libraries serving less than 2,000 people, which wouldn't apply to us. And then we also have some obligations regarding the law library that we have placed within the Creek County Library.
So I would just say to the public, we're not thinking of getting rid of the library. When we say it's not, it's discretionary, because it's been very clear.
I see you put this up, and I'm just going to throw this out there. So I've been visiting at the library, except I'm sorry, I have been on vacation at the beach.
Well, that's okay.
But I'll come visit you this week.
Oh, good.
But the Broughton Room has become a party room. I don't have any problem about the quilters coming and quilting and any of that, but I think that we need to go, and I don't know who does it, but we need to have staff look at charging something, because we need new tables and chairs. We need, I see here you're putting new flooring, and I remember the one gal said something about the roof, people have been sticking, whatever. But the long story short is, it's wonderful to provide those services, and God knows, it's great. And I do want the quilters there, and I do so. I don't know whether we make it, that if you're a 501(c)(3), you're free, I mean, I don't want to stop any of that. But if you're having a baby shower, or a wedding shower, or something like that, which is probably going to cause most of your damage, I think we need to start getting out of the world of the freebie and start charging. I just think that's a reality we need to look at. And I don't know how we set, I have no idea how to do it, but it just seems like we're getting a lot of use in there, and we're not having the funding to take care of it. And so we could set up a separate fund, and that would be what it would be, is to maintain that.
Yeah, we do charge for commercial use.
Yeah, but baby, you know, you know what I'm saying? Because you said, everybody comes in and says, I want to book the party room.
It's called the party room.
I don't want it to be the party room.
Yeah.
I want it to be a room that, if it's for a community service, I have no problem with that. But I also think we need to also maintain
Yes, it does need new flooring. We've had to throw away recently five tables and
That's a lot.
A dozen chairs. They just get used so heavily that, and people are rough on them.
Yeah.
You know, because they don't belong to them.
And I have, and I have a feeling that it's probably the parties that are rougher than
Yes.
the people that are there for whatever, whatever other reason or
Sure.
I don't know how we do that, but I know we should talk to the library board. I think that's something that
It is a conversation we should have.
Yes, we need to start doing that so we can maintain that.
I think it's, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we also look at a deposit and have them do a walkthrough afterwards. That may be too intensive, but if we find that they've broken a table, then they shouldn't be putting that on the backs of, surely there's putting that on the backs of the rest of the taxpayers.
Yeah, so finance does not want us to hold money, and they don't want to issue refunds. So we'd kind of have to figure out a way to do that. We do charge a 25, up to $25 cleaning fee if staff has to go in and do extra cleaning, but we really haven't been enforcing that.
I was just saying, what does $25 get you for cleaning?
Yeah.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we need to get into the real world.
And over the weekends.
Look at restrictions, what we allow to happen there, that would be probably the easiest way to control the damage.
Yeah, because they can use it up till 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And we don't know for sure if they're actually leaving at 10:00, or if it's not till midnight. We did just install a camera in there to hope, in hopes that it would help with the damage that's been happening, but
You know, you hate to do it, but it just seems like something we need to start thinking about.
It is a conversation.
Start opening up the conversation and looking at what rates are. Like I said, I have no idea what they are, but
The bigger libraries do charge for the rooms.
Sure.
It's anywhere from $25 up to $200, depending on the size of the room, how many hours they're using it for, things like that. So we could definitely do some research.
Yeah, without committing anybody to any sort of final decision, what I would recommend is we put some options together, and Kim can have a conversation with the board at the library and get some feedback, and come back to this board at some point with the recommendation.
I think that's what I would like to see.
Yeah, I totally heard.
Yeah. And if you need me to come to the, I will come with you, whatever.
Okay.
I'm done being at the beach.
Okay.
So again, the goal today, just to start to build out a kind of common understanding of what the core services are that the library is providing, open to feedback you have now, if you have questions, hesitate to reach out.
I want to say another thing is, we had a very quick resignation of our director, and I want to thank all of you gals. You've kept the fires burning, but you've done a very good job.
We have a great staff.
And I want to thank you all for doing that.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And we have Friends of the Library and Boards of Trustees that support us, so.
And thanks, thank to all, thank to all of your organizations for doing that. Because again, it was very sudden, and, but everybody's kept it going, and we really, really do appreciate it, especially the people there in Creek County.
Thank you.
Unless there are any questions or any additional comments, yeah, we'll continue to kind of refine the core services description as we move forward to put a final package together. But I think we've got, got to get started, and we're open to any questions, comments you might have as we go forward.
Just appreciate the process, Will. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Kim.
Yes, you're welcome.
Hopefully we didn't torture you.
No, we didn't, wasn't too bad. I appreciate it.
I was going to make sure I didn't have any questions, but I'm good.
Any more discussion? Nope. Okay, here it is then. We want to move into adjournment?
Sounds good to me.
So moved?
I second it.
Name's second, on favor side. Bye.